Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council in a joint work session with the Committee for Diversity Engagement, the Committee for Community Diversity Engagement and the City Council. It is Monday, March 11, 2024. And ask our city recorder, please call, roll.
Counselor Kohler.
Here.
Committee member Picasso.
Here.
Committee, or Counselor Reed.
Here.
Committee member Radek.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Council President Starr.
Here.
Committee member Cross.
Here.
Committee member Brown.
I think she's supposed to be here, so we're not going to mark her absent just yet.
Okay.
But if she does not make it, she will be excused.
Okay, thank you. Committee member Guest.
Here.
Counselor Duran.
Here.
Committee member Music.
Here.
Counselor Hasman.
Here.
Committee member Kuntz.
Here.
And Counselor Cross.
And Counselor Cross is excused this evening. All right, thank you all very much. It's great to get us all back together again and check in, kind of see where the work has been going and to check in on plans for the upcoming months and in the future. So, thank you all for making yourselves available this evening. With this, I'd like to turn it over to, well, two things. One is for folks who would like to listen to this meeting later, the audio will be posted. And Ms. Bissett, we post them to our kaiserTV.com now also, so people can click there.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then on kaiserTV.com, there's a button to push where you can go to, I think it's YouTube and get closed caption.
Yes, and we also have them on our website.
On the website, kaiser.org, kaiser.org. All right, so people will be able to follow up on this, this meeting later as well. Want to say thank you to Chair Radek and all of the members of the Community Diversity Engagement Committee for your work, and I look forward to learning more tonight. With that, Mr. Brown, I'll let you lead off with the facilitation slides, and we can start the conversation.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman and Madam Mayor. These slides were put together, the content of them, by Chair Radek and the mayor, and they just meant to guide the conversation. So, we wanted to start off with a slide of the accomplishments of the Community Diversity Engagement Committee. So, Chair Radek, would you like to review those?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. These are just a few of the ones we put together over the last, was it three years that this committee has existed. Kaiser's 40th birthday party, we provided input on the strategic plan. We were requested and provided input on the neighborhood traffic management plan. Counselor Starr provided the climate-friendly equitable communities legislation information. Tammy Coons collaborates regularly with the neighborhood associations and brings us a report every month. The resource fair for the Latino business, folks that hosted here last Veterans Day last year. And then the monthly observances and contributions by the CDEC member, if you've come to one of the city meetings, you've seen, we provide education. And then we've also had a book club that we did to educate ourselves a little bit more on some of the terms and the work, and have a starting place where we all were in the same space in terms of understanding definitions, the work, and could discuss for three months, I believe we did that. Any questions?
Thank you. I'd like to hear from other committee members about some of your experiences with, with these accomplishments. So, I'll just open it up for other committee members to add to this list, or tell us about what your experience has been with these accomplishments. And I'm glad that Ms. Brown has been able to join us, thank you so much. So, recently, I visited with Ms. Music, who is our youth voting member, and the longest serving, I believe, on the committee at this point. So, I'm, oh, okay, aside from city council members, so, yes. So, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. I would love for everybody here, your experiences and your thoughts.
Oh, my, that is definitely putting me on the spot. I could go down the list. I would say so far, the proudest I've been of our committee was definitely with the birthday planning and how involved I feel like we all were in on that, and the strides we took. Yeah, especially our collaboration with the neighborhood associations, mostly through Tammy, who has been a committed, committed guest for our committee before joining it. I was so happy to see her face when she did join the committee. All in all, I think we struggled and floundered a lot in the beginning, but to see the strides we've taken towards becoming a working part of the city, I'm very proud to see how far we've come in that area.
Thank you. Thank you, I really appreciate it. And I had great, I have great confidence in Ms. Music. When I first interviewed her, thanks to Counselor Reed, she and the other candidate were just outstanding students, but young professionals in our community, and has definitely continued to be a very important voice in this work, as well as the other things that she's involved with. So, I'd like to open it up to other members. I'll call on Tammy.
Okay, so collaborating with the neighborhood associations, I attend most of them. I attended Ken's this month after we got done with our meeting, and just had a small conversation with his association members. And one of the things they would like us to start doing is more engagement with them and more action, as far as taking part in what's going on within that community. The same goes for Greater Gupsir. I spent some time talking to Patty today. Rhonda's group is always doing amazing, and Hirsch's group is struggling a little bit to get things moving, but we are the two newest. But I assume we will grow leaps and bounds, and Tammy is here representing Hirsch and probably Traffic.
Okay.
And I shared conversations with them with the neighborhood traffic management plan. We've spent some time just collaborating on what's best for different areas in our associations and ways that we can engage better to create a more collaborative process in that. And all my notes are in front of you guys.
Yes, I want to-
So, I will not read them.
Thank you, Tammy, for sending this. So, we'll have time to read it and thoughtfully consider, you know, all of the time that Tammy put into providing her notes for us, and this is part of the record. For people who are listening, they will be able to go to the website and download Tammy's notes that were sent to us early this, this morning. So, thank you so much for that. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this, one of the fundamental principles of any kind of diversity, equity, inclusion, engagement work is that you will never do it enough, and you will rarely do it right. And that's one of the things that I've been really impressed with, with this committee, is we've been making progress. You know, it's, this list of the accomplishments, you know, are they, they are a step in the right direction. And I am encouraged that we have gotten some footing, as Ms. Music has, has said, and that we, we have a little bit clearer idea of the things that we can do. But, you know, just to kind of acknowledge that you can never have too much community engagement. And so, that is one of the things that we are striving to, as, as Ms. Coon says, is to always do better. And so, you know, because this is something that, that is just ongoing work, and that we, that we just need to be, celebrate our successes and be able to build on those.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to, well, I want to hear from other people too, but I definitely want to put a star by that neighborhood traffic management plan that has had and will be, moving forward as it's adopted and put into motion, is going to be a game changer for an area that, a committee that has been struggling, and now will have a very meaningful role in, you know, as a conduit for folks in our community. So, I'll stop there, or else I'm going to go down that rabbit trail. Ms. Brown, did you?
Okay, so, one of the things that I particularly think there is a positive contribution by our committee is to share the information that we have in the monthly observances and contributions. I particularly remember Navey's presentation, it was very, very powerful. And when I made my presentations, I heard from several community members about how they learned from our presentations. And so, even though they are short, and it only happens once a month, you know, and some are more powerful than others, I think that it's very important to share with the council and with the important members of the community about the diversity and the needs and the issues of, of certain groups in our community. And we don't know everything about each other. And so, I really believe that education and sharing the information helps us to grow and to learn about who lives in our community and what our needs are. So, I hope that whenever you see on the calendar that we are going to present, that you will invite your friends and family to come and listen, because what, I think that what we have to share is something, that, something that comes from the heart, you know, so.
I appreciate that. That was something new, what, that we added when, you know, doing the proclamations is something that, you know, is part of the job, you know, mayors do that, but to put something with that, to add that community, more personal connection. And I would agree, Ms. Music, Ms. Brown, you are, in particular, Ms. Radek, the, the presentations, the information shared, it's not just, here is slide one, da, 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 da. These are, this is our history, this is our community, this is living. And I think that that has really been impactful for those, all of us in the room, but also people who watch it later on television, going, oh, Kaiser is taking time out of the agenda for this community moment. It's very powerful. I think one of the most powerful, one, a very powerful one for me was when we had the tribal chair, Chair Dees Pigsley, Vice Chair Beau Lane, we, we dedicated a half hour at the top of our meeting, said, we need to hear the history, we need to hear from, we're not going to tell your story for you, that would be disrespectful. Would you come and tell your story? And we took the first half hour. And it was very, very powerful and impactful. And also heard from the Jamawa historian, Sue Ann Reddick, at that same time. So, thank you for that, appreciate that. And I appreciate the work that all of you put in for those presentations. Other members, something to like to share?
I've only been here three times.
Okay.
I've only been here three times, so, but what I've seen so far is that I think we're all willing to listen to each other and learn from each other, and I think that's a good basis for us to continue going forward.
Thank you. Council President Starr.
I put a star by the monthly observances and contributions that our member, committee members make. I think it's really important. I think proclamations are one piece of, of the process of learning. They think really digging into the genesis of where and how these monthly observations came about, I think that's really powerful for our community. You know, I know that we do them along months that we have proclamations and that are recognized. I think we could do more and give our community an opportunity to learn about a lot more, but we don't have all the time. I wish we did. But I would encourage us to think about looking at different, other learning opportunities throughout the year. I do appreciate the bringing potential, or bringing issues or new concepts that could potentially impact our community and differing, different areas of our community in different ways. I do appreciate those coming to CDEC, Community Diversity Engagement Committee, for input and the opportunity to discuss what that impact could be on different areas and populations of our community. I think when I look at who is sitting at this table, I think the capacity for this committee to do more is there. And I think I would like to ask that, you know, when we look at the purpose, which is coming in the, later on in the presentation or in our slides, I would encourage council to consider thinking, being willing to think outside of the box in how to engage this committee. We have very smart people at this table. We have a variety of lived experiences at this table, and I think listening to what our committee is asking for and suggesting is critical to continuing to move the dialogue forward. And I just think keeping the scope narrow could put some unnecessary constraints on what the people on this committee and our community as a whole could accomplish.
Okay. A couple of notes for a couple of pages ahead, so we circle back on that. Sorry, what? Ms. Picasso, I'm sorry, couldn't see your name.
No, that's okay. No, I think that, I, I second that. I think what, the biggest accomplishment, and it's not only what we have been doing for, in particular, me, for the last year, but the biggest accomplishment is continuing to build a team that started, and that we show up every month willing to collaborate and elaborate on potential ideas, you know, trying to find, we strive to find, we're looking at the big picture and the future, and what does that look like for us, and how can we be a contribution to it, is crucial, and that's one of the things that we discuss on a monthly basis. So, I think, for me, that is the biggest accomplishment, just having such a phenomenal team that is willing to volunteer their, their time, and who also have other activities, maybe in community diversity, or I'm sorry, in diversity at their work, and they're bringing that over, that knowledge, or transferring that knowledge into this community, bringing it back home, which is essential in the buildup and the, the future for, for Kaiser. So, I look forward to future, or guidance on what does that look like for our next chapter, but we have a good team.
Thank you so much, and thank you for allowing me to put you a little bit on the spot. I used to want to wrap up it based on what you heard.
I've, I've been here only six, seven months too, and I think we've, we have had some really good discussions. I think the, we often ask for, what are, what are we here to do, because we've got, we're volunteering our time, and as if you've not noticed, pretty opinionated, strong, smart women in this committee. I do think that the strategic plan will give us a starting place and a place that we can tackle. I know we're waiting on resourcing and prioritization, but we've had good conversations about where do we start, and when we start, and what can we do, and let's go. So, we're ready and willing to do more, if you allow us to do more, and provide recommendations, provide, be a sounding board, be a place where you can come have some good discussions, and be that consulting piece. I think, I know we, we tabled the language, inclusive language recommendation, but part of it came from a good place, came from a place of how can we be a city that we've talked about language and considered folks before they even arrived here, that they've thought of them before they arrived here. It's like when you go to a party and someone knows that you are vegan, or you have a food allergy, and they went through the trouble of preparing that for you specifically. So, how can we be a city that's like that, right, that we've thought of you before you even moved here? So, that's the goal.
I love that. Love you before you even got here. So, you, committee members have probably noticed that we've, we, the council, have sent a number of things your way for your input, knowing that your committee is not specifically designed around one particular topic, and one that stands out is the neighborhood traffic management plan. We have a traffic safety bikeways committee, but the intention in setting it, sending it to your committee was to get that different lens. If I'm thinking about it, and I've done transportation policy now for longer than I, I want to think, I'm going to see it through that lens, and I recognize that. So, the intention to send it to your committee was turn it upside down, shake it a little bit, stretch it, look inside, how, does this meet the goal? Does, are there things that, in here, that are really effective? Are there things you have questions about? So, that can go back to the traffic safety bikeways committee for that refinement, to make sure that what gets produced is not only practical from a transportation point of view, but practical in use from a community point of view. And we're getting really close on that. For those who don't know what the traffic, neighborhood traffic management plan is, I didn't either, because it predated me beyond council, it was way out of date. But it is now being updated so drastically, it's now going to be a really useful operational piece, I won't say tools, more than that, to engage the community and engage the traffic safety bikeways committee in being that first entree, if you will, for a problem that people want to bring forward, get that vetted, and then what gets to, you know, the city staff for, and what kind of recommendations come from that. So, I'm really excited, but your input on that was really important. And looking at the chair, who's sitting here from the traffic safety bikeways pedestrian committee, Tammy Saldivar, who's worked very hard on this. So, I think this is a shining example, from my point of view as a council member, on where we asked you to do something that was going to stretch you tremendously, and you came through, from my perspective. What I'd like to do now is, for council members, so I just had my say, so I will step back. As we, as council members, have been observing the work of, and purpose of the CEDC, we'll go to the purpose and need slide, but we'll lead into it from, I'd love to hear what you have to say. So, we've heard from Council President Starr and Counselor Reed, who are on the committee, so I'd like to talk to the other counselors. I just gave one of my examples of where we've pushed the envelope. I'll start with Counselor Hasman, and just kind of come around.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I put everybody on.
So, I am, I am a little bit inspired for the purposes of this meeting because of an example that happened just today in the sphere of college athletics, which is a forum that some people in this room particularly enjoy. I'm so glad Mr. Sangster is not here, by the way. I have so much love for him, but I do not want to hear about Oregon State Athletics today. So, I'm grateful for that. But, minor digression, the National NAACP wrote a letter to NCAA president Charlie Baker that was then administered widely through the media, indicating that student athletes of color, specifically black student athletes, should boycott athletic participation from colleges and universities in Florida. And the reason for that is because Florida has passed laws and regulations, either banning or significantly limiting the scope to which universities and colleges can participate in activities of diversity, equity, inclusion, or belonging. At least two different universities, including the University of Florida, have shuttered their DEI offices. At least three others have fired multiple staff members that are on the way to shuttering their offices. This, again, is a national boycott against college athletes of color, specifically black athletes, from participating in Florida. And if you look at the numbers, especially for college football, two-thirds of all student athletes are black. Men's basketball, something between seventy and, seventy and eighty percent of student athletes are black. This would hit universities in one of their most public interfaces. Now, I bring all that up because there is some significant urgency at play here. This, this is an idea that had slowly been manifesting as more of these anti-DEI laws came into focus, and now they are starting to gather steam, gain institutional acceptance, and institutions are confident enough to broadcast them in a greater forum, national media, letters to, letters to executive leaders, letters to members of Congress, other institutions of government. So, when I look at this committee and bring it back locally and see what is happening in the sphere of college athletics and the attempt of change that people are making, I see a call for urgency. And if council is not necessarily meeting the urgency that CEDC feels is necessary on a major topic, then by all means, come to us and hit us with that. Yes, we love the stories, but we also need, we also need to take our medicine in some respects and hear some of the struggle and hear some of the points of emphasis behind these stories, behind the presentations, behind the proclamations. What the NCAA has done is essentially come to colleges and universities in Florida and publicly proclaim that you cannot honestly trade the backs of black men and women who are playing sports, making money for your institutions, and in the, in the same breath, tell them that their concerns do not matter on their campus. The, the cultural considerations that they deal with on a regular basis are said not to matter on the campuses of Florida universities. I personally believe we cannot let that happen in Kaiser, and we need our institutions to be strong enough to ensure that that doesn't happen. We need to make sure that we hold on to that power as a community. So, my biggest ask to the CEDC is, please check the power. Please let us know when we are screwing up, because this is absolutely the moment in the world in which we cannot lose face and lose sight of the ultimate goals.
And I'm going to, I think Ms. Brown has a follow-up comment before I go to Counselor Duran. Okay. Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Bob. I just brought that topic up to our last CDEI committee, because I had been reading about what's happening across the country, locally and statewide, that they are trying to get, get rid of DEI types of policies. And I just read about it again today. And so, what I shared with our committee is that we cannot let that happen here in Kaiser, because things are happening in Kaiser and may happen in the future, and so we have to be very vigilant that the council- And so we have to be very vigilant that the council and mayor believe in our, in our, in our philosophy. And, and, and I help, I hope that we can work with each other so that we can give you input and you will also accept some of the thoughts and priorities that we want to share with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. You have a follow-up?
Quick follow-up, yes. One, I appreciate the sentiment and thank you so much for expressing it. And two, we, as a council, I do feel owe that to the CDEC, because we want to give a semblance of confidence to this committee. We want this committee to be able to act in that good faith. And if we don't give the confidence, I don't think we're doing our jobs as council members.
Thank you so much. I am reminded of an action that, had we had a Community Diversity Engagement Committee when Measure 105 came up, it probably would have gone through that committee. But I'm looking at former Councilor Herrera, who's here, who brought it to our city council at that time. And because of his work and leadership, I was able to work with leadership on the Measure 1, opposing Measure 105. And we were actually able to take a stand on that as a city council. And that was a very in-depth and important conversation that this council was able to have, and did actually authorize me to sign a letter to submit in opposition back to Measure 105. And that's been, that's prior to COVID, so that's been a few years. But this was, it was an anti-immigration measure, if I remember correctly. And I'm looking to Councilor Herrera to correct me if I got that wrong. Measure 105?
May I add something to?
I'll have to bring you up to, is that okay with everybody? We're kind of, let's go, let's finish going around, and then I would like to, one of our founders, as we got this work going, is former Councilor Herrera. So if that would be all right with you to hear from him, I would want to invite that opportunity. But with that, I'd like to go to Councilor Duran.
I'll make mine a little bit more brief. I'm encouraged that the committee has made, I'm on. I'm on. I'm encouraged that the committee has made some strides in the last few months that appear like they're, you know, like something's happening. I was frustrated for the last, the previous year, that it didn't seem like things were coming out of the committee. So I'm, I'm encouraged that things are, and I hope that the, that we can, you know, through this time together, that we can kind of get the scope figured out with what, you know, what really is going to be beneficial to the community. I think, you know, maybe not narrowing the scope, but focusing the scope is really what needs to happen. And I'm, I hope that through this discussion, we can get there.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Ms. Gust, you know, in all the conversation with the committee members, I passed you over. My apologies.
No worries. I'm probably the newest one up here. I've only, this is my third meeting. I've only been sitting on this committee for, since January. So I'm still kind of trying to find my foothold on where I land in it and kind of just observing what's going on and understanding. I kind of agree with Kyle. I'm still trying to gain an understanding of the focus of this committee and where I can, in particular, help with it. So it's, I'm glad to be here and hearing the different perspectives, so that I can kind of figure out myself what the purpose is and where I stand on it.
Thank you. Glad you said yes when you were asked to join the committee. Awesome. Speaking of which, I guess we're down, round to down. Councilor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This committee has been the source of joy and frustration in, for me. Jill is the fourth person that I've appointed to the committee, and some of the other committee members expressed frustration, saying they didn't feel like that they were doing anything that was positive and that, and they felt like they're wasting their time. So that was a concern for me. And so when I talked to Jill about this and she consented to be here, we had a little talk about trying to make this a little bit more focused and help a little bit more to make it productive. So I enjoyed working with a number of the members of this committee with the 40th birthday party. That was a lot of fun. We got, we had a lot of interaction that probably we wouldn't have had without members of the committee here, and I appreciate their work. And interesting to see where we go from here.
Great. Thank you so much. With the committee's indulgence, I would like to invite up former Councilor Herrera, who was a part of helping us establish the Community Diversity Engagement Committee. Would you be willing to share a few thoughts?
I'll be.
It's good to see you.
My name is Roland Herrera. Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank all of you for taking the time in your busy lives to be here. It is very important, in my view, okay? And for a person in the community, I want to thank you for your time, okay? And along the lines of what Councilor Housman was saying, you know, there has been a push locally into eliminate DEI, and that's, it kind of, it's kind of close to my heart not to do, let that happen. As you probably know, that's kind of what my passion is, but they've eliminated, they shut down their whole DEI department. And a little background, that was put together after the George Floyd situation. And they put it together, and, and I want to quote Council Reed, this work is never done. I mean, it continues. It's like education, you know, it's anything else. And it concerns me, because in my circles, and I'm talking about statewide here, the name of Kaiser has come up in areas that would be a good place to try that. And we did that once, as we all know. We did something, and we all had the courage to undo it. So I'm thinking in steps of prevention. Like I tell my kids, I mentor that, everything, you've got to think a few steps ahead here. And I'm thinking in terms of not letting that happen and making a statement that we are committed to DEI. I know it's slow. I mean, I get it. It's frustrating sometimes and stuff, you know, what, but at least you're here and you're starting. And that's a big deal in my line of work. And I really appreciate, and again, I'll emphasize this, I want, you know, a little background, I was one of the original members of the original committee. And we tried to do the best we can. I didn't agree with everything, but you know, you go with the team. Whatever, you know, when you vote for something and you're unvoted, this is what our team wants, right? And that's what we wanted, and that's what we got. And I love that you're here. But I'm concerned about the movement to remove DEI. And again, I was on the Board of League of Oregon Cities, and they actually made a huge statement about that, because equity and equality are two different things, as we all know. Equality is like you want to buy the, I'm going to make a metaphor that I use in sports, because I was a coach. You buy everybody shoes, free Nikes. That's equality. But equity is buying them the right size. So everybody gets a size 10 or everybody gets a size. So in our line of work, we want to make sure that we're a community. And diversity, DEI stuff, that helps collaboration, it helps engagement. In workplaces, it helps retention and bringing good people in. Giving people a voice is so huge. So I really appreciate your work, and there I go on, more than my time. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And again, thank you for letting me put you on the spot. So this has been a good kind of setting the stage, if you will, for our conversation tonight. So we're over three years in to this, from the establishment of the committee. We've had a lot of turnover, a lot of change, a lot of growth. We've thrown challenges like the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan at you and, or your predecessors, if you weren't on the committee at the time. And that was, if you look at the scope, and we're going to go into that now, that was partly what I know I had in mind when this was created, was, again, to have that, that lens, if you will, that a group of people that look at things from a different point of view, and like I said, turn it around, you know, stretch it, open the lid, you know, see what's going on, see if it really works, try to break it, if you will. So, and Mr. Brown, is this, this is the slide that's from the attachment, from our attachment A, correct?
So there was, the question, it was on the previous one, is it, what is in the scope of the committee or out of the scope? And so the next slide is the six things that are, my understanding was, that they would, the CDEC would work on.
Right. So just to refresh everybody's memory and people who are listening, what we have for every committee and commission, we have what's called an Appendix A, which describes the specifics for every committee and commission, if they have a particular purpose, need, tasks, deliverables. That's all individually in each and every one of our committees and commissions. So we simplified our whole processes several years ago, so every committee has kind of the same boilerplate for establishing the committee, but this is the nuts and bolts. This is the work plan, if you will. And what we're asking tonight is, this work plan, is it relevant, current? Are some things done? Do they need to come off? Are other things need to be better defined? That's part of the conversation tonight. So that recommendations for making changes to this work plan can begin here. So, and as part of what I think I just heard from all of you was, you know, about what's working? How do we make sure we capture that in the work plan and that we're really clear about, we all understand what everybody's doing? And that as the work continues to evolve, that we do more of that. So looking through the six items that we have, collaboration with council, other city committees, commissions, neighborhood associations, to increase active participation and recommend culturally responsive actions. This one, I heard loud and clear, is still very relevant. Are there any changes, clarifications, questions, ideas that people have relative to this one? Ms. Kuns.
I would like to see us engage with, and I know that some of you know I attend all of these, so this is for everybody else as well. So with our parks committees, our traffic safety, our commission, all of the other committees and commissions that meet here, I would kind of like to see them attend our meetings, at least somebody from each of those, as we start attending those meetings, so that we can collaborate on whatever projects may be coming available. That would help engage each of us at different levels. Each of us have different gifts. I'm very motivated, I guess is a nice word. And I just think it would help build a stronger collaboration. And along with that, it allows us to share information about what's going on with the neighborhood associations or with the other groups, so that if somebody's not aware of a problem, we can kind of bring that to their attention and find a way to collaborate to fix it.
Okay. Ideas on how to operationalize that idea? Council President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wrote this down a few times in this document, and I know that I've brought it up a few times, the CDEC committee as well. But I think it is critically important that when plans, documents, approaches, policies, you know, for example, when Shane brought the CFEC issue forward, when we looked at the traffic management, Neighborhood Traffic Management Safety Plan, you know, looking at some of these different concepts, if you will, that we look at them from a standardized approach. And I have, I would encourage us to develop an equity lens. So we're looking at the, we're looking at, when we're asked to look at something, and it doesn't just have to stop with the committee. And I would like to hear from my other committee members as well, my colleagues, their thoughts. But I think that when we don't have something consistent and we don't have an agreed-upon framework from which to evaluate whatever is being requested of the CDC, that we run the risk of having our, we're always going to have our own individual implicit bias, right? But when you have this consistent framework to evaluate things through, I mean, teachers use rubrics, right? And they have, it is lined out how they're grading papers. I think we would be well-served as a city, both a committee, a council, and city staff, to have agreed, have an agreed-upon equity lens of which to evaluate things. And I would love the experts, that I think we have a couple of them sitting here at this table, to help maybe connect the dots on what I'm trying to communicate, but probably not doing a very good job of. But I, we are sorely lacking on a consistent framework to, in which to provide feedback.
You took what I was thinking definitely to another level, because I was thinking about how we're going to intermix and, you know, build relationships or interoperability between the committees, but you're talking about creating a framework that would go beyond the individuals, but become part of our systems. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
I'm going to look at Tice and Stephanie. They know more than I do, so.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilor Housman, then I'll go to, yeah, Ms. Radek and Ms. Picasso. I'm going to get it, Julie, I'm so sorry. Councilor Housman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council President Starr, I hear you, and I think I may be able to help. I'd like to rope Ms. Radek into this. Any, Ms. Radek, in your professional line of work, you do occasionally see DEI-related audits, correct? And there's a, there's a pretty good standard framework as far as how to conduct an audit, or at least a good set of rules that you've seen used?
It varies. But I guess what she, what, if I can speak, and I'm not going to put words in what you said, so I'm going to try to rephrase it, right? We're not going to, I'm not going to mansplain.
You've all heard me many times, so you know where I'm trying to get to.
I think part of it is, are there set questions that we can ask? Are we unintentionally leaving anyone out? Have we thought of all the groups that could benefit? Are we unintentionally harming anybody by approving this? Or are we unintentionally leaving opportunity out? Those are just some of the questions that we often, if we don't ask, then we may do something and have unintentional consequences that we hadn't thought through. So it is a framework, it's a lens. I don't have one that we could use as a city, because what I will say, oftentimes, DEI is not standardized, the same way that our laws are not, like, our policies are not the same as City of Salem, they're not the same as McMenville. We are different communities, and we need to create things that work for us and our size and our constituents. It's not a boilerplate approach, but I think we could think through it, come up with some, use our gathered knowledge and expertise, and then maybe bring it to you, bring it to city, bring it to an attorney, bring it to someone, say, have we thought of everything? And are we missing things out? Yes, Navia?
On this topic, I believe during my meeting with Clark, we had a very nice coffee. We discussed other cities that have some forms of CDCs as well. Some of them are quite larger than Kaiser. I believe Eugene has one, Portland. If we could find a way to contact them and see if they have any framework that we could use as examples to build off our own as, I believe that might be useful.
Love looking, learning from others. Love looking, learning from others.
And I think we do have tools. I know that I'm also volunteer for my employer as well, for the DEI, and so we do have a framework. We do have equity lens that we often review and that we talked about, and this is what we look at when we implement any, or when we make any implementations. So, I know we have suggestions that we can bring forward. I think it's more learning on how, what is the scope of our work? What is in scope? What is out scope? And we, if we can define that, and the vision, what is the vision, I think that we can, we can make things happen.
Well, I think we've got three good examples of processes that you have done, and that was the neighborhood traffic management. We asked you to review it. So, what is used for that? You know, what were some of the questions that you came together and asked? So that the feedback that you gave to Traffic Safety by PED was going to make improvements or at least give a framework around what was going to be effective. The other one was strategic plan. You took the time with it. Again, you opened the, opened, looked at it from different points of view. What are the questions that you asked around that? And how did that then frame recommendations that came forward? And then the third one, I just had a brain freeze, the climate-friendly equitable communities. I didn't know that you had reviewed that, and that is a very, very relevant topic right now, as our scenario planning is getting underway. Counsel Duran and I will be working with the committee, that will be putting together the scenario planning that we are required to do through Department of Land Conservation and Development. And as those plans come forward, we're going to be bringing recommendations to council, but we will want to engage with community diversity engagement. Again, have we taken this from the point of view of more than, I do a lot of transportation? Counsel Duran is a builder. We have a lot of community experience, but I think we both like hearing from people who have new experiences and different experiences, so we get the whole picture. So, I like this idea of a rubric for open-ended questions. I'll go Ms. Picasso, and then Counsel Reed?
No.
Okay. Counsel Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I think too, and this is, because we kind of had a sort of working equity lens that none of us were particularly happy with, as we reviewed the strategic plan and these other plans, but it was a start. But as with any rubric, there needs to be some sort of flexibility with, in terms of purpose. I mean, we can't, we can't have a rigorous, you have to look at these questions in this way kind of thing, because they're going to be different for different situations and different, you know, different groups of community members that they're affecting and so forth. So, just, yes, a rubric is, or, you know, an equity lens as a rubric is an excellent concept, just keeping in mind that we will need to be flexible within that based on, as needs arise.
Okay. Thank you. So, I think there's some, let's, let's pin that one as for development. The other one I'd like to camp on for a moment is neighborhood association. This was put in here very purposefully when we first formed this committee, because, and Ms. Kuns, you said it, we have neighborhood associations that are struggling. So, how do we help create a neighborhood association types, models, et cetera, et cetera, that work in today's world? What had worked 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, doesn't necessarily work now. People have different lifestyles. They, both parents working, yes, we're supposed to be commuting less. I wonder how that's working for everybody, because it's not working for any of my kids. That was editorial. Anyway, you know, the question I asked when we formed the committee, are neighborhood associations working? What can we help to make them better, more effective, more outreach? I don't have that answer. I think we, and then the larger we, do to be a place to bring more of those ideas together. Years ago, we had a city council that said, I know, we'll just map out the city, draw the boundaries, and these are the neighborhood associations, and they'll well-established them, and they'll happen. Did not. And we ended up dissolving them, because they never happened. They were top-down. They, they happen organically. Tammy and Jacqueline with Northeast, with Tammy and Hirsch and Jonathan for Northwest. Those happened organically. So, my question is, is there a role, do you think, with the CDC and neighborhood associations to collaborate on methodologies, bring ideas from other communities for creating, encouraging, building up neighborhood associations to be the effective means for people of today's world, not yesterday's, today's world, to really engage? That's my, that's my huge challenge to you. Counsel Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wonder if it would be a good idea to ask a couple of our neighborhood associations how they feel that this committee might, might benefit them in their work. I know one of the reasons that Ken is here is maybe to learn a little bit more about that, or maybe give some suggestions. I would think that might be helpful to reach out to them.
Well, should we put more people on the spot, if they're willing? Ken, are you willing to take that? Committee, are you all willing to invite some of our neighborhood association leadership up here? We'll start with Ken Girloff from Southeast. Thank you for being willing to share with us tonight. I appreciate the willingness to do that.
Thank you for inviting me to comment. First tell you that we're absolutely clueless how to proceed. We do look to you to help us engage our community. What I'd like from this committee is more advocacy, I guess, rather than, what I heard the last time I attended meeting, which is brief, because we're this same night, so I don't want to get 30 minutes of the meeting, was that they were wanting parks, say, come in with a project, and then we'd comment on it. I'm looking for more advocacy to come to us, say, you need more this diverse in your neighborhood, or you might try this in your neighborhood as a diversity, to try and get people engaged and stuff. So, look for more advocacy rather than reaction would be my hope.
So, Ms. Gust, please.
So, I guess my question is, because I don't really participate much in the neighborhood associations, except for with the chamber, what is the biggest change you've seen to your neighborhood association over the past few years?
I guess participation overall. We used to be quite engaged. We had more construction, more, more issues in the neighborhood. As we've solved those issues, it becomes less important for people to attend meetings and keep involved. So, it's that involvement, and I think some of that is lack of diversity. We have for years tried to reach out to Hispanic community very strongly. We have a community center we work with just for that purpose. It's been running now, it'll be 24, 25 years this May, I lose track. But that was one of our ways to try and engage the community, and it does work, but not to the extent that I would say that's a finished project. There's much more. We have a large Russian group in our neighborhood. We don't know, have a clue how to engage those people. So, we're just looking for some answers, the same as you, I mean, but we're looking for advocacy. We don't want to wait till we have a project and then wait for you guys to make comments on it. We'd rather be told, this is a possibility, you might be able to try this in your neighborhood, or try this in your neighborhood. More advocacy, I guess. Tell us more what we might do.
Thank you. So, maybe a word I'm hearing, I'll go to Counsel Kohler, actually, Ms. Picasso, and then Counsel Kohler, is equipping, consulting with. We need help. Help us, you know, brainstorm ideas from a broader lens, broader point of view, and a generational change as well. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, very much so.
Okay.
I'm kind of that dying generation. We need more young people and more good ideas.
We're still kicking it. Ms. Picasso?
I do think one of the biggest challenges, and we talked about, you mentioned earlier, you know, people working two jobs or both household members working full-time jobs. It's really the time, you know, to make it to events or meetings. So, technology is a big tool that, or it's a source that we need to be utilizing, and how do we approach, and how do we get to inside the homes on a SPAM or in a device that is so easy to access for them? And I know in-person is more impactful, and I know in-person, we, we need that human connection that really makes us move, but I think the time is very limited, and I hear that often when I ask, how you, why are you not participating? It's because I work a lot, and I have very little time to engage. So, finding other ways to, to provide that information and invitation for the ones who do want to engage, but they just don't have the time.
Thank you. Counsel Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ken, I just want to first say that, commend you a little bit here. Out of all the neighborhood associations that I've attended, the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association is the most diverse as far as its membership and those that come. And I'd like to see that with other committees too, but, but I know that even though you've had some success in that way, you would like to make it more diverse. And so, I just want to commend you for that, and the work that you're doing there, it's positive. It's neat to see people from all different kinds of walks of life to sit down together and say, hey, this is, these are my concerns, and okay, how can we work together to make this happen? I don't, I don't see that near as much in other, in the other groups, but I really appreciate that. But I also commend you to, that you want to make it better even.
I think that with all of our neighborhood associations, and Ken, you've been at this for a long time, the desire is, how do I engage in what, it changes our lives, impacts all of our lives. I was speaking to middle school students a few weeks ago, and I said, you hear a lot of noise about all this national, blah, 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 blah. I said, if you want to make a difference right here, right now, today, in your own neighborhood, in your own life, local's where it's at. So, trying to get, get through the media noise down to what's really important. And all of us being here tonight, this is our neighborhood, our community, and we're putting the time in, but it's tough, tough, tough sledding.
The only place that I can have any effect, I mean, I can't do it nationally, I can't do it statewide, but I can have an effect in my neighborhood and have had over the years, and that's where I put my energy, because I, there isn't a cause and effect.
Yeah.
It's worth my energy.
I think that is an incredibly important message. Thank you so much. I appreciate you being willing to share your thoughts.
Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. I'm going to look to the other Tammy. I know you're with Northwest. Do you have thoughts to share with, again, this has put you on the spot night, or maybe it's just, you know what? We're all neighbors.
Engagement.
Yeah, this is engagement. We're all, this is how we figure stuff out. We just do it with microphones and stuff, but that's okay.
Hi, Tammy, City of Kaiser. Really, I'm just going to echo what's already been said. My, we're very young, as we pointed out, our neighborhood association, and outreach is what we're struggling with. Did Hirsch give you other ideas that I'm unaware of that we're struggling?
I just attended.
Yeah, okay. And, and so, what we're really looking for, like I said, echoing what's already been said, is understanding of how to do outreach, because none of us are young, and even though I have kids, somehow I still don't grasp what it is they want to use as the form of communication. So, there's that, and then resources from the city to allow that to happen. It's the two big things, whether it be a webcam, that we can just talk directly to them at that moment, or some other methodology, and this is again where we need some ideas also. So, we appreciate the funding that we now receive from the city, because that allows us to print methods of, you know, door hangers and cards and do what we can, but it still limits us on everything beyond that.
I saw, I heard a question.
Well, I don't think I heard the second thing that you said. You said how to do, how to do that outreach? And then, did you say?
Resources.
Thank you.
Ms. Music.
Would you like some of that advice right now? Or would you like to perhaps talk after the meeting?
Let's talk, well, unless anyone else wants to hear it as well. I don't want to take up time.
Go.
Go right now? Okay. First off, Instagram is like the best way for any, like, outreach. Instagram Live is a very common, if you wanted to do a live form of meeting, just like how we have, put our stuff on YouTube, I believe. Instagram Lives are well-received by younger generations. And then, I follow personally, I follow the Salem-Kaiser School Board, and I watch all of their videos on Instagram. I have no idea where else I would find them. That's how I've kept up to date on all the negotiations. So, just posting videos of the meetings on Instagram in a format that would be easier for, like, we prefer, like, shorter videos, two to three minutes. Rather, unfortunately, our tension spans are a little shot. And then, that could be easily achievable, even with low resources, a, any, like, I have an iPhone from like 2015, even that has a well enough camera that any video I post isn't going to look like it was taken extremely badly. And that would just be a great place to start. And then, what most influencers do, like, smaller influencers, is you go and you follow those people, and then we tend to just follow whoever back. We're automatic like that. And then, once we see it in our feed, we stop and we watch it. And if we find it, like, we're like, oh, hey, this is pertinent information to me, we'll go and we'll check out the profile, we'll look through all the videos, and that's a great way to give information to the younger generation.
Do you feel that you know people who would be interested in what we have to say at the neighborhood association level? Like, would you follow your neighborhood?
I would follow, but obviously, I'm here. I feel like there is a good section of youth who wants to get involved in this without necessarily realizing how. A side project I have right now, I've been going out and talking to the community with, and they have been so, they are so happy I'm outreaching to them, but they have all these problems that they're giving me, that I'm like, you could have gone to the city council at any point and had those problems fixed. But they don't necessarily realize that that's a source to get through. So, there's definitely a large amount of youth who want this activism without realizing how they personally can get started in it. And I feel like neighborhood associations would be a great place to start, and you would be able to capture their attention through them.
Okay. I have to learn a lot more about this.
Can I, can I elaborate to that? And it is, she says it right, and it's not just youth, but again, working parents. We have a short amount of time, and like, the, the more that we get to the point, the easier it is for them to capture that information. And just like we are struggling to engage them, they are also struggling to understand how to get engaged. And I know both of my kids are in the same way. They want to help, they just don't know that they fit in with what they want to help, because they're, they're in a different understanding, right? So, we, we are okay, I am okay with having long conversations, and I can sit with you and have long conversations for hours. They will not have long conversations. It's like, how do we get to it? And make a movement, and let's act now? Like, how do we fastly move? And they, they do want to help. We want to help, but it's shorter forms of communication, for sure, and more... But it's shorter forms of communication, for sure, and more interactive. I think interactive is important when you ask for them to act on something versus just talking about an item or talking about a subject. It's how do you, what do you want out of that? Now that you explained me that subject, what is it that you want me to do and act? And encourage them to act upon.
Yes, Ms. Roderick. So, what, I've seen the City of Kaiser Instagram and content, and it doesn't seem like you were doing a lot of content, that you could use some help. Could that be what some of the videos that get played is, "City of Kaiser, here's the Neighborhood Association, here's what they had to say today." Come, like, you're showing that there are lots of neighborhood associations, and you're showing that the city is friendly and welcoming and embracing. So, again, that solves some content creation, because I don't know that you have a social media person, but maybe you do. Okay? So, that's free content, and it serves the purpose of broadcasting, because you, hopefully the city has more followers than the Neighborhood Association, and adding, tagging, or what have you. So, just an idea.
Sorry, I'm taking notes. And I'm laughing because I am really, I'm charged up about this, because I do a coffee with Kathy, Facebook Live, Zoom broadcast once a month with a lot of our community leaders. But to be able to take some excerpts from that to Ms. Music's point of view, to take pieces of that for shorter Instagram snips, and I'm gonna learn how to do that.
Nivea's gonna do a training.
If we want to even think even more outside the box, schools have leadership teams that they want to engage in the community. We can ask what they can do, if they can provide some of that content. How do we translate some of the information into small action? And you have them from middle school all the way through high school. So, you have multiple groups in schools that that's what they do. I mean, that's a class. They have a class in that leadership, and they, they're advocates. They are action-driven, they want to provide, and, you know, this is a great, a great resource that might be available to the community in engaging them.
There's also seven years' worth of avid classes who all need volunteer hours, who would love to help you.
Yes, I'm very impressed with the avid students. The acronym and the term applies to them across the board. They are so engaged, they want to make a meaningful difference, and use what they're familiar with, with their technology will raise up the next generation. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This could also be something that we put under the job duties of our youth counselor. So, because they, you know, they're going to all the city council meetings, they're doing all those things. It's a different thing than in the neighborhood associations, but if that is a job that we, that we sort of give to the youth counselor to perhaps delegate, that might be another way to get that word out.
Love it. And the youth liaisons.
Yep.
So, let's develop that. I was just pointing out that we are engaged in a phenomenal conversation, and our time is ticking by. So, I'd like to go to the slide that talks about the right direction. It has our, I think it's what's up there, focus for the next year. So, I think we're to that point of the conversation, and I think we've heard some really major things. What I've not heard is a significant change to the Appendix A. There might be some wordsmithing in there. And what I would like to ask the Community Diversity Engagement Committee is at their next meeting, look at those six, based on tonight's conversation, and if there's some language changes that can help better define what you are hearing tonight, I would ask you to do that. We could wordsmith that tonight, but I don't think that's gonna be a good use of our time.
Agreed.
So, if I can punt this to your team to bring this back, as recommendations, I would love to have that. So, there's task number one. Task number two, what I heard tonight loud and clear, and yes, I was really loud on this, item number one has some significant areas. One is what we talked about with the city committees and commissions. Two, where did I write my notes? Okay, just like two pages in. We talked about the, how to collaborate across. What I would look for, the CEDC, talk about what that looks like. There was the notion of, you know, interoperability, visiting each other's committees and so forth. Again, that's more evenings out. Talk about how you could, how we could recommend that we do that in a way that does not add a lot more in terms of expectations for our committee and commission members. We have to recognize that, you know, people have committed to the level that they are comfortable with, so kind of keep that balance in mind with work-life. But what would that look like? What are some opportunities for, like, either frequency, to have liaisons assigned, or rotating schedules to connect up with, or to just watch the meeting online and report back? You'll lose something, I agree, but if that will facilitate at least that. But if you would mulle that over and bring back a recommendation. Counsel, anything additional on that one? Then I also heard loud and clear, neighborhood associations to set up some consultation. And this is a dream of mine. I got to tell you, I've been dreaming about this for three years since we started this work. How do we help our neighborhood associations be all they can be in today's world and in tomorrow's world? Heard it tonight, opened to those conversations, want to hear it. What can we do? Yes, Ms. Music, you and your team would be very welcome to do some trainings on some of the current media. What does that look like? And to something we talked about earlier, we have a lot of the noise from the national and maybe even the state level, but how do we get the attention of our own community? For our own community? That's hard. So, I would love to hear some of that. Any comments on that? Counselor President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure we're setting expectations so that the CDC is not being set up to not meet them. That is not, I just want to, I don't know that that is a conversation that we will be ready to do consultations in a month. I think it's... I'm, yes. And I just am wanting to reiterate expectations, because it's not like we're gonna meet next month and have, be ready with all of these suggestions, or be ready to have, to go out to each of the neighborhood associations, or to have this big proposal. I think that there's, there's a lot of meaty conversations that go on when we're talking about these things. And so, I just wanted to make sure that we're managing the expectations of people are thinking we're gonna be ready in a month, two months, or even three months to come out with this big proposal or this big plan. So, I just am wanting to make sure we're clear on that.
Ms. Picasso.
And I think two of the points that I hear from community is advocacy and resources. Those are the two major needs, and those are two that, one, advocacy, we can, we can definitely work on, but resources, that's another topic and expectation in that, maybe it goes to city council.
Fair enough. Ms. Roderick.
I was just gonna say, I think it is something we can tackle. I loved that there are budgets for the neighborhood associations. I don't think I heard about that. And to your point about, you know, we're doing this work, we haven't asked for a dime. The biggest, the only, I think, cost we incurred, and it wasn't us, was the city, was translating the strategic plan into Spanish, which was very much needed, very much supported by the committee, and we wanted to do it potentially other languages as well, Russian being the potential next one. I know costs are our consideration. But again, the costs are minimum. If there's resources for the neighborhood associations, great. We can put our heads together and look at them, and then maybe request some more. Resource appropriately, so not asking for the moon, but asking for what we need.
Identify the tasks, and then, because you don't know what to fund unless you've identified what you're going to actually use it for. Once you have a plan in mind, then you start resourcing it. It's not the other way around. It's like, here's a whole bunch of resources, what are we gonna do with it? That doesn't make sense. But these are the objectives we need to accomplish, this is, this is the road we have to build, this is the building we have to take care of. Okay, we have to do that, therefore, then you look at the resources to do it. So, I love that. The third thing I heard, or fourth, I've lost track, is equity lens. Discuss whether it should be a template, a rubric, a guideline, basic questions to address. And think about the three experiences you've, those of you who have been on the committee long enough have been through with the three, the strategic plan, the neighborhood associate, the neighborhood traffic management plan, and the climate-friendly equitable communities. We've asked you to look at those three from a lens of our community. So, what did you learn from that? Can those learnings be put into something that could be handed off to the next person? I'm always doing things with the idea that what I do, if it's going to last beyond me, has to be in some form that I can hand it to somebody else and walk away. And I'm hoping that what will come from this will be exactly that, that there'll be something that I can hand to someone else, and they will understand it and be able to use it, a tool, if you will. Does that make sense? Okay, those are some of the things I heard. Ms. Roderick, what are some of the things that you heard for going forward?
Echo what you said. I do think we wanted some clarity on the strategic plan. I know I've been asking that for a little bit. I know you tasked us with Section Four, which has a lot of engagement words in there. I would like to have some clarity as to the next steps. And I know it's still being sourced and assigned from, for City of Kaiser, right? Personnel and who's taking what items or what have you? What's the, what's the next step? Maybe I don't know where it's at.
Thanks, Chair Roderick, and Madam Mayor, and committee and council members. The next step per the council is for the mayor and council president and I to sit down and schedule out a work session to figure out a schedule. We have all of the comments that were made by the committees gathered together, thankful to Dawn, Melissa's assistant, she's put those all in the same place, in a single place for us. And we have all the original data. I've been working, working with it last, today and Friday, thousands and thousands of comments, trying to put them in a digestible format. But yeah, to be short, the council said, asked the chair, council president, and I to sit down and come up with a schedule.
That said, I'm really excited that you've been looking at this and to pull recommendations for action, knowing that this is pretty much a framework that's already been well looked at by staff, and recommendations for things that are operable would be very welcome.
Can I add something? You had mentioned, we actually did come up with a low-tech, I call a low-tech Russian translation. And I, you said something in a meeting that I really appreciated. It was one of the Community Diversity Engagement Committees that I attended. And you said, "Don't let perfection get in the way of progress." And Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association, Ken, had asked for translations in Russian and Ukraine. So, I spent a half a day or so doing what I called the low-tech, because one of the things we heard was, "Don't use Google Translate, because it's not completely accurate, and you're gonna offend people." And the translations were about $2,000 apiece for each language. So, I used Google Translate at the risk of offending people. And I was thinking of your, that statement that you made, and was able to give some copies to Ken to distribute. I didn't have the time to get to the Ukraine one, but that's something as a staff we struggle with. Is it, is it okay, or is it not okay sometimes? Maybe that's the problem with these, this work, is sometimes we tiptoe around it too much.
I would say, in those instances, just expect grace. You're gonna get grace much more for trying than for not having it. Because again, like I said, you thought of them, you've thought of the folks that need it in different language. Doesn't need to be perfect. You thought of them, and you made your best effort putting forward that it was something in their language.
Thank you.
Thanks for that comment, because it really helped me.
Okay. So, we heard a lot from, especially from item one, equity lens and so forth, identifying leaders and building leadership capacity. Again, we just heard there's gonna be some opportunity with our youth liaisons. And I'm gonna look to see if we can engage our youth counselor with Ms. Music on some recommendations. I think that would be, and our other youth liaison. So, love to put a pin in that one to see what we can do to glean from the collective wisdom there. Counselor President Starr.
Are you, my parting comment, is that what you're leading up to? Or do you want me to suggest that we also ask the CDC committee to discuss this last question under procedure, which is, it's on the next page? I would suggest having the committee discuss this and then make a recommendation to the council. Is it time to have the volunteer coordinating committee appoint the members of the Community Diversity Engagement Committee? And I think it's really important for the committee to have that discussion, because we are the people that have been at the table, having conversations about this work. So, I would like to see the committee, I'd like to see that question start with the committee.
This has been a question we've been wrestling with for a little bit, as we've been going through this first iteration. When we started the committee, it made a whole lot of sense for the city council to make the initial appointments. And we went through quite a process to do that. And I don't know if the time is right, I don't know if it'll ever be right, but I can't answer the question without asking the question. I'm asking, and I agree, let's ask the question.
And I just have one other thought, if I can follow up on that.
Follow up?
This is kind of my closing. This committee was appointed, from my understanding, it was created before I was part of council, but it was created to be an advisory committee to the council. Is that what, I mean, I've read, is that, am I clear on that? Okay. So, if the committee, if we're an advisory body to the council, if this committee is going to ask council for something, or is going to make a recommendation to council, my ask is that the council listen to the committee's recommendation or request. You appointed us, please listen to what the committee is asking for or requesting, because we've spent a lot of time discussing it before it goes forward to a recommendation. So, that is me with my committee member hat on, and I will leave it at that.
Thank you. Ms. Brown.
Okay, Madam Mayor. So, this question that Shani just talked about is something that I have been asking ever since I got appointed to this committee. And so, I'm really happy that this topic is going to receive some attention during our committee meeting. And I hope that our recommendation will be taken seriously by the council. And I think I can sense the beat of the council as to how much each member of the council supports the thoughts behind this, the Community Diversity Engagement Committee work. And so, I know that I heard a couple of comments with frustrations and this and that with our committee. And I will say that I have felt some frustrations myself, so, but I have not heard... So, but I have not heard what those frustrations are specifically. So if anybody in the, in the, in the, in city council has certain frustrations, questions, issues, we would like to hear them specifically. I don't want to hear generalities. That doesn't help us in trying to develop plans for the future for the community. That would help me a lot, you know? I don't want to hear complaints without some sort of questions for us. You know, how can we make this committee more active? You know, so that it includes our community. And here is the, the word that is part of what this committee name is. And inclusion, and I'll just make this last statement. Inclusion is something that I think we all have felt in some form or another. I think socially, you know what that means, when you are included in an invitation to a meal, to a party. That's its inclusion. Somebody asks you or sends you an invitation personally, that's inclusion. Okay? And I'm going to give you one example of somebody in this room. Many of you know that I'm an active committee member of the Kaiser Community Dinner. And I was the original, part of the original committee that asked certain churches in the community, certain organizations in this community to participate. Well, I knew of one church in this community that has always been, I would strongly say, isolated. You know, good people, and I have a lot of friends in that church community. And so I said, hey, I know somebody in that church that we need to include. And so I reached out to Dan Kohler because his church has not been one that has been out there and been actively participating in community events. And guess what? Dan is one of our most visible, committed member of the Kaiser Community Dinner. But it took someone to reach out to that community. And that's what inclusion means. You have to be active. You can't be passive and sitting down and thinking, well, you know, maybe somebody will come and ask to, you know, come and eat with us. No, you have to reach out, you know? And some people here know that, and I'm not trying to make myself look good, but this is an example. You know, I reach out to Lisa, you know, and, and some of her friends and some of my friends. I go, make sure you come. And I sent a personal invitation because I think it's important that you make that personal reaching out. You know, whether it be somebody from a different religion, somebody who speaks a different language than you, somebody who looks a little bit different, somebody who is in a different social-economic community than you. You have to get out of that comfort zone. And I think that if you have ever been excluded, you know what I'm talking about. And your exclusion doesn't mean that it was intentional. It's just that that's the way it has always been. And I think that it's up to us to be actively changemakers. You don't want to be thinking, oh, this is fine. You know, I live in my house on my street, and I'm doing fine, you know? You have to be a member of the community. You know, we're, we're not insular people. Anyway, thank you.
I think that's the final word. Ms. Rodick, anything else?
That, that was eight years ago, by the way.
She'll know when I say. So I'm here representing the Kaiser Cultural Center, and we do a lot of community engagement. We have the four nonprofits at, my name is Lori Christopher, I'm from Kaiser. And we have four nonprofits within the old Kaiser School. And that is the Community Library, the Kaiser Heritage Museum, the Art Association, and the Theater. Kaiser Heritage Museum is becoming more and more active. And there's a really great event that I want to invite you personally, all two. And it is on April 5th. And it is the, it's the book signing for the, yes, now she knows. It's the book signing by Dr. Russell Lowe, and it is celebrating Chinese-American history in Oregon. And there's going to be a presentation in the theater. Anything that happens in the Cultural Center, all the nonprofits kind of get together. And, okay, you get, you use our classroom for this, use the theater for that. Anyway, it's an hour long. It's on April 5th at 6:00 p.m. There's going to be treats. And I think it will be a really, I mean, this, Dr. Lowe is the grandson of Low Sun Fuuk, who came to America, established a farm right in Kaiser. I mean, I, this is a population we don't hear a lot from. So I want to invite you all personally to come and join us on April 6th at 6:00 p.m. at the Kaiser Cultural Center. In addition to that, we're now putting all of our focus on the Kaiser Cultural Center Facebook page. So if you look up Kaiser Cultural Center, like us, follow us, and you'll get more of this good stuff. Thanks.
April 5th or 6th?
5th. April 5th at 6. April 5th at 6.
Four, five, and six.
That's right.
There you go, four, five, six.
My birthday. At the cemetery. So go to the page for all, all the good information on that. Ms. Rodick.
I think Carrie summed our last words. We have, please come to one of our meetings. We would love having folks, so attend, please.
Did you have something?
No.
Okay, we're good. Thank you all. I really appreciate all of your work tonight and that you've been doing. I look forward to catching up with you again a year from now as, of course, we'll meet a lot in between. But to summarize and to continue the work going forward. Thank you all very much. The time is 7:39. We are adjourned.